Meeting to order, rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity today to come together as a community and as a group of employees. We ask that you be with us and guide us as we go forward and help us in our decisions and just give us strength in our convictions and lead us in all we do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right. Before we begin the order of business.
Hey Bob.
Good evening.
Hey, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, I didn't dress up for you.
Oh, it's pretty sleepy.
Steve, how are you? Haven't talked to you in quite so long.
All right. Here we go. Well, welcome to the August 4th, 2025 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Bourbon County, Kansas. We'll begin the meeting in a few minutes. First, I ask everybody silence your phones. Please take any private conversations to the lobby. If at all possible, for safety reasons, leave. We ask that you remain seated and not block aisles or doorways. Those that have been assigned to speak will be called upon by the commission chair during the public comments portion of the agenda. Those that are speaking on agenda items will be called upon at the end of the commissioners discussion. We welcome both criticism and praise equally. Be respectful and follow common decorum, addressing the commissioners as a whole. Each speaker will have three minutes time limit again. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. As we begin. Approval of the agenda, any corrections to the existing agenda?
Yes. I would like to move the department updates up just below five phone systems with Dallas.
And for what reason?
Dr. Cohen's here and he's doing one and he needs to get back to the city.
All right. I agree with that. Do you have an update besides this work session that we had together? That you would like to discuss with the board, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. So we'll move that to just after number five?
Are we doing it for all three of them?
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah. I would also like to add stronghold, an update on stronghold.
Where?
Um, we can do that in old business.
Okay.
The last item?
Sure. And then, um, that'd be good for me.
That'd be good for you?
Yeah.
You're spilling over here on my space. All right, uh, you said old business?
Yeah, that's fine, at the bottom of old business, you're fine.
Stronghold.
Hang on, sir.
All right, um, any other changes?
I'm good, sir.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
Fairback?
Yes.
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 All right. Uh, approval of the minutes for July 21st, July 23rd, and July 28th.
I have something on that. All of those minutes have a YouTube link at the bottom. And I believe unless we somehow archive that YouTube, we need to be leery of putting that in the official minutes that are forever on that YouTube link. So do you want us to flash drive them and?
Okay.
They're saved on YouTube. That, that, I've been, I've been warned of that. So do we want to allow the YouTube link in the minutes?
Um.
I do not, I don't want to allow that.
How long has it been? And I'm asking you, Madam Clerk, how long has it been part of?
Just wait a minute because I'm not doing, I'm not doing the minutes in great detail like they have in the past.
Okay. Um, so it is just something recent?
On, on the minutes, on the minutes, when I, when I read them, I just want clarification. When I read the minutes, they almost sound like they're being AI dictated.
They're not, someone sits there and listens to the meeting and texts them out.
Okay, all right.
So no, they're not.
Is there something wrong with them being AI dictated?
No, I'm just.
No, I'm just asking.
No, the reason why I said.
That would be an easy way of getting it done.
It's harder to read because it's usually in one block paragraph. There's no breaks in, in, like, see how that document's written in paragraphs? Usually the minutes are one page of just.
These aren't, this is.
No, I know that isn't, but I've seen them in the past where they are.
Because the, in the past, they, they would put more information in there. We're putting the basic, you know, someone, someone sort of talked about this and this was the, this was the vote.
Okay, so my question to Commissioner Milburn is, is there something within the minutes that you feel is not?
There's a YouTube link at the bottom. That's what she doesn't like. That means historically, forever, you're gonna need to be able to get to that YouTube link. Can you guarantee YouTube?
I can't.
I can't either. I, I would rather them not be in the minutes.
So that is your, your motion, or have you made a motion?
I haven't made a motion, I'm just not gonna motion to approve the minutes unless that's not in there. I'm gonna say no.
You're saying it needs to be.
I need to understand.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna strike it, we need to have a consensus and a vote to, to strike it. Either we're gonna leave it or we're gonna strike it.
I don't know.
I mean, to say that you're, you know, I'm, I'm not wanting to hold the minutes hostage on whether or not you, you approve them or not. Uh, so I'm, I'll make the move. I move that, um, we strike.
Can we continue this conversation a little bit more before we move down that?
Well, go, go ahead.
So your biggest concern is the fact that it's electronically captured in the cloud somewhere?
There's a link, yes. And we can't guarantee that years from now, that link will be good and active.
And then what does that?
May I play devil's advocate?
Sure.
You can't guarantee anything's on the link. You can't even guarantee in the cloud, and I have cloud accounts everywhere.
I know, that's why we don't want them in our official minutes.
And then back up again, uh, what does, i- if for some reason YouTube collapses to, you know, in, in a month?
Yeah.
And nobody can get to that, what does it hurt?
Well, then it's in your official minutes and so you need to have a backup besides YouTube or something. We need to.
I'm fine, but take it out, I don't care.
So.
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what does it hurt because the, the minutes themselves are, are, are public information for requested.
Yes, and if there's a link down there that says if you want to see more information, you better be able to produce that to them.
I see where you're coming from.
Yep.
I don't know. Maybe I can.
I move that we strike YouTube from the listing at the bottom of the, of the official minutes.
Second.
Train?
Yes.
River?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So now the, the original motion, I move that we approve the minutes of 7/21/25, 7/23/25, and 7/28/25 as corrected.
Second.
Train?
Yes.
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 All right, consent agenda. Uh, we have accounts payable for July 25th, 2025 totaling $254,176.18. Uh, approval of 8/1/25 payroll totaling eleven hun- or $1,128. Approval of 7/31 payroll totaling $1,031.15. Any concerns, corrections, or comments?
There was a postage charge that, Susan, you can tell me what it came out of. Um, but I thought it should be out of elections. Can you explain?
To who?
Well, it was a $7,000 postage charge.
There's a $3,000 postage charge that gets, that's how we refill our postage machine and it goes to general contractual like it always has.
Didn't we just spend a lot on the?
We haven't been billed for it yet.
And that's gonna go out of elections?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's as a result of redistricting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So any other questions, concerns, corrections? No? All right, I move that we approve the consent agenda, approval of 7/25/25 accounts payable totaling $254,176.18. Approval of August 1st, 2025 payroll totaling $1,128. Approval of July 31st, 25 payroll totaling $1,031.15.
Second.
Train?
Yes.
River?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next up is phone systems, Dallas with cloud communications. Are they here?
That's our area.
That's Jason.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nobody here?
Nobody here?
We can swing that around.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
If they show up, we'll get back to them.
Probably South Bay's in the wrong.
All right.
Did you get my message about moving the department head?
Yeah, you're, you're up next, or we're up next with that first. We'll, we'll talk, we'll start with, uh, department updates with Dr. Cohen.
Um, so just wanted to let the commission know the order that I anticipate getting things done. Starting with the policy manual, then moving to job descriptions. From the job descriptions to the, uh, performance appraisal process. And then from that to wage and salary. I anticipate that we'll be talking about, about six to eight weeks for each one of the elements. The process will be that I'll develop the first draft. Then I'll present them to the department heads for their review and edits. Then it'll come from the department heads to the commission for final approval. Once the job descriptions are approved, then the performance appraisal process comes. The performance appraisal is a subset of the job description. So we'll no longer be using a generic one-size-fits-all performance appraisal tool. The performance appraisal tool will be, uh, associated with the job descriptions, it's a subset. And then once that performance appraisal process or that performance appraisal tool is developed, then I'll come down and do a training for anybody that's a supervisor that would be using the tool. I'll provide a training session so that they're comfortable using the instrumentation. And then once that process is underway, then we'll go to wage and salary. So, um, I anticipate over the next six to eight months, we'll get through all those systems. And then along the lines, there'll be some training that's provided, not only to the commission but to supervisors. And then we'll have a training session for all employees on sexual harassment prevention. And perhaps, uh, there'll be one or two others if the commission approves it. If there's no additional charge for any of those things, that's all part of the contract.
Okay.
Okay, and then you were going to go over the payroll company as well? And the company said that we could call them if you wanted to.
Sure.
Collaborate.
Right, and so, um, my recommendation was that, uh, commission consider using an outside payroll firm to do the bi-weekly or monthly payroll. It could be that some departments would prefer monthly and other departments would prefer bi-weekly or bimonthly, two times every other week. Uh, the payroll company will provide stability, uh, regardless of who's in office and who's not in office. Uh, there still will be, uh, a person within the county to provide the payroll information. But all the, um, all the tax withholding, all the reporting, all the, um, payroll at, will be then done consistently and without any, um.
Okay.
You know, fluctuation or any, uh, regardless of what's happening within the county.
Okay. Got any questions for Dr. Cohen?
No, I have questions about the payroll. Um, are they just gonna do payroll, they're gonna do anything else?
The proposal that they gave you, and I believe they answered the questions and sent it back. Did they send that back to you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, uh, so.
That's not on the agenda tonight though, is it?
No, it's not.
It, it is actually.
Where?
Under Dr. Cohen payroll.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, I mean, are we, are we talking Emerson, is that what we're?
Yep.
Okay.
And, um, one of the things that actually should be in the policy manual, uh, I'm glad that I was reminded to add that, uh, anytime that, that there's purchasing to be done, if it's a commodity, then it would be subject to multiple bid. And if it's professional services, then it can be, uh, you know, since you're not buying a can of corn or a car or a truck or a piece of equipment, it is subject to, uh, judgment and kind of the chemistry that exists between the commission and the provider. It's also part of state law that if there's a professional services contract, that doesn't have to be multiple bids. So I'll put that in the policy manual with your permission as well. But, uh, I have recommended Emerson and Company, they're, they're not the only company that could provide that service, but they're the company that I have the most experience with and they have multiple counties that they're providing this service to.
Okay.
So commodities are three bids, pro-service is sole sourcing?
Can be much.
Okay. What's, when?
Wait a minute.
When, when do you, when do you, what's the projected timeline to execute this contract? A month, two months?
Oh, um, usually at, at a minimum, it'd take 90 days, at a minimum.
May I, Chairman?
Hang on just a second. Commissioners? You done?
Hmm, prior to execution of said contract, may I have a copy of, uh, of the performance work statement for said contract?
Do you have their contact? You can.
I, am I?
Allowed to call them?
The reason I'm asking you is, Commissioner Milburn, this is your lane and I don't want to step on your toes.
I, I am.
I, I want to be respectful about.
Anything that's over, uh, I think the number was a thousand dollars would have to come back to the commission anyway.
Right, right, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to, well, I don't want to jerrymand or anything if the commissioner's already got her, you know. So may I call them?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Just a second. Any other discussion from?
You know, I have had a lot of discussions about this and I do, I do believe it'll be beneficial to our county if we move forward with it.
Okay. Any other?
No, sure, I, I just, I just need to talk to Emerson about this and, and I have some questions that I need to ask him, I think. And we'll go from there.
All right. Is there any signups regarding questions from the public regarding, no, this was something separate, on this agenda item? No? Okay, um, so are we tabling it for him to discuss with them or?
Or were you, were you gonna do a vote on it tonight?
What would you prefer?
I'd prefer to see the P W S before.
That'd be fine.
All right.
We'll table till next week.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next up is, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, next up will be Laura Holdridge.
Could you all pick up Bowler, please?
Okay. Next up is Laura Holdridge, Department of Register of Deeds.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Is that on?
I forgot to pick up a, a card. My question was for Mr. Cohen, was to, is there something wrong?
Okay, we, we, that, that we, you can bring it up next week if you wanna be on the card.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Um, I have a few things here. Um, one of the things that Christmas falls on a Wednesday or Thursday, it falls on a Thursday. And there's a lot of people in the courthouse that want to be off on Friday. So to give up the 24th and have the 25th and the 26th off instead of the 24th. I've talked to all department heads and they've talked to all their people because there's gonna be a lot of people taking vacation anyway. And they would like you guys to change that. So we're not coming in Wednesday and Thursday, or being off Wednesday and Thursday and have to come back in on Friday.
Okay, um. That was, uh, we just went over holidays in that work session, so, um, I would have, I don't.
This is for this year.
Yeah, well, it, it happens in other years too, so I mean, and I know like in the private, private sector, it's either or. I mean, either you're gonna get the 24th, 25th, or 25th, 26th, depending upon how it falls into that work. You know, a lot of the, I mean, at least where I came from, I've had the 25th, 26th off when it falls on a Thursday, Friday, or even on a Monday, Tuesday for that matter, instead of, you know, Christmas Eve, just got swallowed up in the weekend. So me personally, I do not have a problem with seeing us adopt that, but, so, questions?
And I've been said I talked to all department heads and a lot of the employees.
Yeah. I mean, it's, though at that time of the year, I'm telling you, you're not gonna get much productivity out of anybody on Christmas, the day after Christmas.
And there's a lot of people, they go out of town.
That's like getting productivity after the day after Super Bowl, but.
Are you asking for the county, I mean, are you asking for the county to give them Friday off too?
No, take Friday instead of.
And move it to.
And give us the 26th.
The two days would be 25th, 26th rather than the 24th, 25th.
Rather than, I don't know, I mean, probably governing is, governing comes down to being, you know? And I think you gotta give people the latitude to make that decision. And who better to make that decision than the department heads? Because we can say that we give that, we can shift their holiday, okay, I'm good with that. But what happens if it, our decision affects the department here? I would rather have input from the depart, all department heads before I say yes to it.
I talked to all the department heads and a lot of the employees.
I, I understand that, but you said a lot and no disrespect, man, that's a lot, not all. I wanna know.
No, I didn't talk to all employees, I did talk to all department heads.
Well, I'd still like to hear it from them, Chairman.
Okay.
I don't have it.
I mean, we're still working on this rough draft of this book, so, um, I mean, that, of the employee handbook, so we can address this further down the road.
Because right now, you're looking at this and then the one right after that is, is. Makes sense?
Okay.
Okay, I have a request that I am requesting $18,500 be put back into my tech fund. We do not have an onsite, um, IT person. And that is why my RMIS money went into that fund was, Jane and I have been working together for 20 years. We needed computers. I put it, was glad to help the county out. Um, I don't know what person you're gonna get. Rumors are rumors, I've heard that you guys are gonna have stronghold B R I T. And so therefore I'm requesting, uh, transfer back from that fund. There's more than that in there, but what I contributed to is $18,500 and I will use it in my department for the IT stuff that I need.
I'm not making any moves of money.
If you got the money back, would you be needing any help from stronghold at all? Would you be, would you be serving your internet connectivity to the building?
I would be getting my own IT person.
So you, you wanna hire your own IT person with 18.5?
It's not gonna cost you 18.5.
Okay, but that, that IT person is gonna touch our network?
No.
So how are you gonna connect to the network? Are you not connected to the network?
Um, not, I'm not an IT person, so I don't, not for sure. But Barry Rice is, I'd already asked him. Um, since our two IT people have left, even though it says they're still here, it's not like we're kicking them out the door referring to IT personnel. Well, my IT person's not here and I haven't seen stronghold, they've never stepped foot in my office.
Most of you haven't.
But, um.
Point of order, please be respectful.
Um, I'm, don't, I don't think we should go with stronghold. I was told to my face that we were just having an audit. And I'm.
Would you like to explain that?
When, when we started out with the audit, that was what it was gonna be, was a house audit. And then I'm not gonna get into the details of what happened with personnel and why, you know, w- we now had the vacancy with it and why we decided to, that's what kinda dictated where we decided to go with this. Um, and so as we move forward, and there's gonna be hiccups. I mean, anytime you change, uh, from one system to another, there's gonna be hiccups. And, uh, but I, I think what you should consider is for your department, I mean, cause I, I'm not gonna dictate what you do in your department because you're elected by the people just as we are. But, um, budget considerations down the road, when it starts coming to IT and stuff, it may be 18.5 now. But, you know, when we start looking at your, when you start making budget proposals in the future, uh, are you gonna be able to continue to, to operate at that, at that cost? Or are you gonna be asking for more money to?
No, I don't believe I'd be asking for more money. Um, but one of the things that, um, it went into the computer fund and, um, with us being, if you are going with them, we're outsourcing everything. I mean, outsourced, we've outsourced so many things that I didn't know that there was something wrong.
Okay. And again, and again, I mean, this, this is, you know, a- as we move these items down, you know, as we consider these items, we're considering them as a board and how's it affect, you know, uh, within our perimeter of authority. Uh, if you as an elected official want to do something different, then by all means, we're not, we're not here to stop you.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I'm just, you know, like I said, I caution, you know, to think about your future and, and, and overall cost to run that on your, you know, as your own department, uh, as what Commissioner Train was saying.
I think we need to let the budget committee consider this too. They're working on this.
So. So, you're gonna table it for tonight and what, gonna?
No, I don't tend to move forward with any of this.
I mean, as far as your request, uh, I'm, I'm not for transferring money back. I mean, as far as where we're at in our budget and, and, and that, I'm, I mean, right now, uh, Budget Committee's looking over all, over the overall budget. But for twenty-twenty-five, I mean, we, you know, you know, we're just gonna have to deal with what we got right now as it is.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the other two. So, if they wanna give you back that money, that's something that needs to be motioned and bring to a vote.
I still have questions.
Okay.
So my thing is, okay, you're, you're alleging that you gave them eighteen, I'm not, that's not wrong. You're saying, what I'm hearing you tell me is, you're not getting eighteen thousand five hundred dollars worth of services for the money you put into, into the fund, the IT fund. My thing is like, I don't know, I don't know, cause when was the fund transferred?
Every year I give the computer fund after the first of the year.
So we're six months into the year. So I would, I would surmise that Mr. Walker provided some type of service to your office in those six months.
But it wasn't IT, wasn't?
I don't know that.
It was the computer equipment fund that it went into. It went into for all other offices that don't have funds to be able to buy computers.
So you gave, you gave money to, you gave money to an FTE who took that money and put it into his fund to use it as a group fund to take care of everybody in the building, is what I heard. So now what you're saying is because you're not happy with Stronghold, you're not happy with what happened, you want that eighteen-five back?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so, so we're straight on that. Second thing is, if you sever yourself from the network within the building, how are you going to operate? What funds are you gonna use in order to reconnect yourself and your system back into the building, into our network? And that's the first part of two, two parts. How can I ensure the security if you come in through a system that's not our own? Part of the issue we have right now is the security of the system. That's why Stronghold is here, please, it is. So my thing is like, I need to make sure that our system is secure.
Well, we have Barry Rice that comes in here now.
And who's Mr. Barry Rice?
He's RTS and he is hardware.
He's RTS.
He's provided the hardware.
Okay, but is he, is, is he allowed into our system?
No.
Adam, no.
And Stronghold's been working with RTS on equipment, so I'm.
I, I, here's, here's my, here's, here's my assessment of the situation. While I can, I can understand Ms. Holdridge's point, okay? It's six months past, we're already six, seven months, no, eight months, we're in Au- August now, we're eight months into the year. If she chooses not to give the money into the IT account for next year, that's fine. But I think right now the service has been rendered in some form or fashion. And I think severing her system from ours right now is a detriment. Because I'm not hearing how deeds can function without being connected to our system.
And is it the best use of taxpayer funds to spend more money on a completely separate system?
That is a question for Ms. Holdridge to, she's the elected official, that's her department, she needs to answer that to her constituents.
But aren't you kinda doing that by going to an out of town, taking our constituents' taxpayer money to a Joplin, Missouri base that's only here on, supposedly onsite, two days a week? You know, they're not, you know, I could call up and say, this is what my computer's doing, this is what, you know? And it'd get fixed, like then and there.
So you have a problem, it, it's not with us not having an FTE. You don't like that we have an intern support that's not got an office in Fort Scott, or Bourbon County?
Right, we should have an onsite IT person.
But you just said a minute ago that you were not happy with the fact that Stronghold was brought in without proper.
No, I don't think we should have Stronghold because Stronghold is at Joplin, Missouri, where our Kansas tax dollars are going. So I, I don't believe in, um, sorry, Bob, I don't believe that anything that is outside of Bourbon County, my Kansas tax dollars going to. If you don't live in Bourbon County, you shouldn't.
Shouldn't work in town.
You should work in town, live in town.
So we shouldn't have?
So we shouldn't shop outside of Bourbon County?
So I shouldn't allow?
Not for stuff like this, but I know corrections and the Sheriff's Department and stuff are totally different, cause it's hard to find.
So I should, I should.
And it's not hard to find the services?
So wait, so the, the internet should not enter Bourbon County? We should not have anything from outside of the four boundary lines of Bourbon County?
I mean, Crockin's from Duran.
Well, Crockin is from Duran, yes, but how much money do they save us? And the favors that they do.
Don't know, don't know.
The favors, there is a problem there with that.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's, 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 uh, move on, I mean, as far as, uh, your department and the updates that you brought, um, on this fund.
I, I had one question from Ms. Holdridge, you know, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to come see you in your office. It's the, the road and bridge report? Do you have one?
No, I don't get a road and bridge report.
I thought.
Road records?
Road records, thank you.
I have road, I am now doing the road records.
May I have a copy of that, or look at it, or whatever, I've never seen one, I've never seen one.
It's not like a report.
It's just a ginormous book.
It's a ginormous.
Okay.
Uh, plot, like a, like a plat.
Okay.
And then it has several books, old books, that we just got done scanning. And there's four of those, so.
So you scanned the books?
I do, I have every book scanned in this building.
So it's, 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 there's a digital, there's a digital footprint somewhere of all this information?
And they're saved in several, all different places.
Is that, is that something I can access from my house?
No. No.
Okay, so I have to come in your office and look, look through your, and use your computer or whatever? Okay, that's, alright, I will definitely stop by then, thank you.
Yeah, there's this very interesting, and then I wanted to, one more thing. You still have nothing on Lot Four, which is the EMS building?
There's your deed, I was gonna have you double check the, uh, legal description before I sent it and had Legacy sign it.
Okay.
Is Terry still in the building?
Thank you, Bob.
There you go.
So there you go.
Okay.
So once you approve that legal description, then I'll shoot it to the, uh, Legacy.
Could you also, when you shoot it to Legacy, could you ask them to come and remove their products from you? Because it is filled now.
Sure.
Please.
That's off the survey you sent me.
I'm uncertain if those are technically their.
Yeah, that's K R I.
Okay, well whoever that may be, it's like, yeah, just, because you guys definitely need that building, you need to use it, so.
The main reason I wanted you to check that is, the print's so small, I wanna make sure that we, maybe you can blow it up?
Yes, I can, yeah, I can blow that two hundred percent.
We could, we couldn't do it. Alright, so, if you would take a look at that, and if you okay the legal description, the deed's ready, then we'll.
And does that parcel go all the way to the road, Bob?
Uh, I just went off the survey.
Well, according, yes, well.
It does not? It looks like it on the GIS map, so it hasn't been separated, or has, or no?
It has not, here is a survey, it is just past Lot Four.
So they sub-lotted it when they gave up the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, this is heading up to sixty-nine highway, this is?
No, this is.
Okay, this is?
Yes, so, this is where the EMS building is now, that's what they were given, and this, this would be sixty-nine.
Okay, okay, this, they're gonna keep, they're gonna keep this?
All that.
So, so there is, so it just hasn't been updated on the GIS map yet?
Um, we, I haven't got a deed yet, so, soon as we go, I go over this deed and give it back to Bob.
Just email it, yeah.
Just email it back to you?
Or just email me?
So what's, what's the acreage on there, does it say?
Probably not much.
Um, it is one point three six acres.
It's pretty good, that building's, there you go.
Okay.
So, that, I think is everything that I had.
Thank you, ma'am.
And if you guys would let us, just let us know, I've got some people wanting to take their vacation for that Friday. And I wanna make sure that my title company for sure would know if we were gonna be off.
Had a question regarding that department?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Please, sir.
Wasn't there a, 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 a portion that needed to be reviewed to the company as well?
No, that's, that's part of the, the main hospital.
Alright, next up is Eric Bailey.
Brought the office. Was that all?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you, appreciate it. Alright. Get ready to get started here. Go ahead and, since we're welcoming you back, I'll go ahead and make the statement that Dustin has, uh, rescinded his resignation. Worked very close with HR, following proper protocol, and, uh, have agreed to bring Dustin back in his, um, position that he was in. So just wanna be very clear with everyone that Dustin is back. Very thrilled to have Dustin back.
Welcome back, Dustin.
Thank you. He's quite an asset to this county, so anyhow, leave that there. And moving forward, um, until I hear different from you, I will go ahead and train Dustin and get him up to speed on everything that I have going or what have you, and, uh, we'll go that route unless you tell me different, so, um.
Can he turn director?
I don't know what you wanna call it, but I, all projects I have going, everything we have going, I will let you guys decide with Dustin how you wanna do or what you wanna do, but I just wanna make sure that he's aware of all the projects we have going and, uh, different things like that, so.
You've been mentoring him for how many years?
Five.
Please continue to do so until the day you leave.
Will do, will do.
And until the day you leave, I'm gonna ask you each and every day if you'll reconsider.
Okay, okay, alright. Moving right along, we got our monthly culvert permit, I'll go ahead and pass this around for you if you so choose to sign. We put one in for Bourbon County Veterinary Clinic, out at twelve fifty-one, two hundred and fortieth, Rob Morris at twenty-two, twenty-four Valley Road, and Mitch Quick at twenty-eighty-six Justice.
And this is one of those post-signature or deals, so I move we sign the culvert list. Train?
Yes.
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 You should have also received your fuel report, um, via email. You ought to keep that, so you can give a copy back to us when you get yours. We have been contacted by Kansas Department of Emergency Management, um, KDEM, from the May nineteenth storm. That was the night everybody got to go back in the back room and hang out. We had excessive damage out in our county from the flooding and, and, uh, they are going to be here to start off the kickoff meeting for the damages that we received, um, this Friday at nine AM. And I believe it's gonna be virtual, is that correct, does that sound correct? A virtual meeting for that. We will be in the EOC if anyone wants to attend. If there's gonna be more than one of you attend, you may wanna make a motion for that.
This is on the eighth, at nine AM?
This, this Friday, so I'm not sure what the exact date is.
Sit nine?
Nine o'clock, yes.
And you can zoom, you'll, you'll have a Zoom link?
Sure.
Yes, if you're supposed to send out an invite out.
Okay, go ahead and send me the invite.
Every Zoomer or Teams, whichever one they, I don't remember which one they use.
If more than one of you attend, I have to publish it.
Okay.
If we attend virtually?
Well then, it's a meeting.
Okay.
I mean, you, you go ahead, this is your thing.
No, I mean, you're gonna.
Or, or she can just publish it.
You can, you can.
But it has to be public then?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's make it public.
So you'll do it in this room?
No, it's a Zoom meeting, why would it be in this room? You could Zoom from home.
Because we don't have licenses for all of that.
If the, if the, if the individual sends out a Zoom invite?
But the people on my agenda that I have, and I'm required to send to them, if they don't have Zoom, then they can't attend and they, you have to make it public. So the meeting should be held in here by Zoom, you could put Zoom up on the TV, would you agree with that?
Probably, why don't just one of you?
Go ahead, Sam, go ahead.
I mean, that, that'd be a lot easier.
On, on my own.
I mean, I, just a suggestion.
I, it's your, it's your lead.
I know, I know it is mine, but go ahead. I'm good, because, listen, Wednesday I gotta be down at the ba- barn, so I'm probably gonna be at the barn on Wednesday. So if you wanna hit it on Friday, I'm fine with that, okay?
This, this will be back in the EOC room.
Right.
Uh, with just Ryan and myself and Eric.
But, but I really would rather you than me, if it has to be one.
Alright.
Alright.
So can I go to the EOC and meet there, or do I have to Zoom in?
You can go to the EOC.
Alright, I'm, I'm at the EOC.
Alright.
Are you still zooming in? No, okay.
Just Commissioner Tran.
Okay, perfect. Just to clarify some things, um, we did have a little bit of internet trouble out at the landfill Friday, Saturday, and today. I'm happy to say that, um, we have that now fixed out, are fixed, Stronghold and New Abe have worked together. I got them together today and they've got the problem solved. Um, we do apologize to everyone for not being able to, uh, use their credit cards out there, but wanna thank them for working with us during that time. So, we, we do have a few customers that use it on a regular basis, so, thank you with that. Um, asphalting, supposedly we will be able to pick up, and I say supposedly, we're supposed to pick up our, um, oil distributing truck tomorrow. Parts have been backordered and backordered and backordered, um, we hope to pick that up tomorrow. Dustin and I have talked, we're going to put a plan together and try and get some asphalting done. Not only before I leave, but try and set up a plan where Dustin can continue trying to get asphalting done for you after, um, I leave. So, just give you a heads up with that, we're gonna try and start next week, is that correct? So, just wanna, um, get that out there to everyone, so, try and, try and get that done. And then, uh, kinda wanna do a little bit of rebuttal on the, uh, safety discussion with K Works last, uh, last week. safety discussion with K-Works last, uh, last week. Kind of got folders for each one of the commissioners. And then, here's one for you as well, supposedly. I don't know what can be let out, what can't be let out. First and foremost, we'll kind of go through this. I want it to be very clear that safety is very, very important at Bourbon County Public Works. Not only to myself, but to all the employees at Public Works. You had K-Works here, uh, last week. Mr. Mann, as you see here, the very first sheet, um, there has been emails between Mr. Mann and K-Works and myself, starting in April. We are very, very excited to have them come in Wednesday. Um, as you'll see, we tried to get K-Works here before, but we just couldn't quite get it to work out. When we had our meetings, they weren't able to come. We tried to do virtual, they had medical emergency come up, so, um. But anyhow, they, they did offer you some, uh, programs that they offer. Their flagging, flagger training, their defensive driving, and their, uh, forklift training. And I think as you go through these emails and documentations and what have you, you will see that back in twenty-three, we've already done the defensive driving, the forklift training, and the flagger training with K-Works. Very good training, very, very good training. Dustin and I have talked, it's time to probably redo the defensive driving and the, um, forklift training again. We did do the flagger training end of May, I believe. I want to say it was around May thirtieth or towards the end of May, um, using K-Works training material. So, um, also during those trainings, I, I just want to be very clear that I included the chairman of the board at the time, which wasn't Chairman Bearbar. But commission was involved with that. So, that's your first group. Shows that we, we have communicated, we have talked with K-Works, and they do have some very good training in there. Your second sheet you have there, we did develop the safety board at Public Works. And here's the, all the books of everything that we have. I've kind of got you a short version here on this. This is just kind of the minutes, a summary of the minutes. If you kind of go through there, you see that we have, uh, there's ten people on, on the committee. Uh, we, we went across the board in Public Works. So, that a way, they, we would have someone to represent each department that we had out there so they could report back to their employees. There are several agenda items, and you can see topics that the employees come up with. We, we have talked accidents. We know we've had some accidents. We do take those very serious, up to disciplinary action on the accidents. So, just kind of want to make sure that's out there as well. As you, there's a page in here shows you everyone that's had your flagger training. We, uh, we did not have a meeting in July. And the reason we did not have a meeting in July is because we are down one, two, three, four.
I got five.
Five, five of.
Are you replacing them?
We, we will eventually, and/or however, whatever you guys decide on that. I would strongly encourage you to replace everyone on there and keep this program going and moving forward. I think it's very beneficial. And not only do we have these minutes, just so we're very clear, on Monday mornings, every Monday morning, we, we do what we call a tailgate session to where we discuss safety items or what have you. And then, the Monday following the safety meeting, whatever was discussed in the safety meeting is brought up, so.
So, on these tailgates, I mean, just for clarification?
Yeah.
Uh, is it kind of like you do an on, a pre-job brief on what jobs you're doing that day?
It's all the above. We, we not only talk about the job going on for the day, we usually do it, if we have new jobs for the day, we'll talk about who's going where, who's doing what on, on the, the job part of it. But on the briefings, we go into depth on, make sure you're wearing your PPEs, make sure you're following the MUTCD. We know it's getting hot. Make sure you're drinking plenty of water. Look out for your, um, fellow employees. Make sure they're drinking plenty of water as well. When it's a hundred and ten in the shade, pop's not going to cut it for you out there, guys. So, look out for one another, help each other out, so.
Do you, Eric, provide, um, do suburban county provide the packets of, uh?
The electrolytes?
We do not provide that. We're straight water. And the reason that I don't do that is some people, some of that has sugar and what have you in it. I just, we go straight water. And that's the cleanest way.
And sugar-free too.
Well, it's still.
I mean, I'm just saying, yeah.
But then Billy doesn't like grape, and Johnny doesn't like lemon, and he doesn't like orange. It's just water across the, across the board, seems to be.
I, I ordered it for.
I understand.
I know. And I know the, the variety of flavors.
Yeah, you just used the whole box, and then what is gone, you know, the flavors in the box.
I have seen some of them do the suicide method where they pour all different flavors in, so, uh, anyhow. But you also have the new K-Works forms, forms that we have to fill out or that we were given here in the last, what was it, couple months, three months, two months, that we have to fill out. So, those policies, procedures, or what have you are listed in there. There's a vehicle checklist on the back of it. And then, last in there is you have a copy of our general safety policy. You guys make the policies and procedures. We have to follow them. We try to very much follow what the safety we have in our employee handbook. Um, that's in the back, back there for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very, very, very happy to see you updating your employee handbook, your safety part of that. Something that needs to be looked into. I will agree.
Ongoing, should be ongoing.
Ongoing.
Yeah.
That's a good way to put it, very good way. So, um, but at the end of the day, I want everyone to know that safety is very, very important across the board at Bourbon County Public Works. That's the just, the just of everything. We want our guys to go home in the same condition that they came to work in. So, that's, we'll leave that at that. And then, last, this will probably be, I will say will be, not another month left, my last meeting. So, I do want to thank everyone from commissioners to elected officials to general employees. This man sitting to my left, um, it's been a great ride. So, it is time for me to move on. I will be moving on. And last but not least, I definitely have to thank my kids and my wife for, uh, putting up with me leaving all hours of the night, the phone calls that are taken when we go out to eat, conversations that are had, um, very understanding. And I want them to know publicly how much I appreciate them for all they've done for me and the support that they have given me. So, with that, I thank you, and I will be working with Dustin to get him up to speed on everything, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
You got anything else for me?
Yeah. So, I'm glad you came in here and I'm glad you rebutted.
Okay.
And more importantly, it speaks volumes about the integrity of who you are. And you know that. We've had conversations, and this is my public apology to you and Mrs. Bailey for all the things that happened to you last week when what I said in this meeting was taken wrong. It was not a harpoon against you or your team or anything. I was just merely stating that there are certain individuals, no matter how you train, we got to get them. It's just the eighty-twenty rule. It wasn't you. Makes sense? We just need to make sure that we capture everybody, and that was my, my, my hope. But in the end, you took the brunt of the angst, and for that, I'm sorry. Okay? But please tell Mrs. Bailey that, uh, I really appreciate.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, so. Anything else?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Did you just, yeah, I was just staring at you. Just stare away.
All right. Moving on.
I'll see you before you go.
Okay, yep. We'll see you Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Nine o'clock, is that right?
Yes, sir, nine o'clock. Thank you, Dustin.
Pursuant to KSA seven.
Oh, wait, wait. Dallas is here. Remember, we said we'd circle back.
We'll circle back.
Thank you.
Can we just stand?
Yep, nope.
Come on up here to the table.
Speaker. Did you bring us any?
No, I didn't have any.
Flyers?
No.
Just information?
Yeah.
Okay, information only.
Yeah, if, if you had, uh, I, I'm Dallas with Cloud Communications, and, uh, you'd asked me to kind of give you an option for your phone systems.
Yep, there's been some talk about phone systems and needing to update phones and phone systems and.
So, your, your current provider also provides internet? So, one of the options would be to split that to just providing internet and making phone service its own thing? Uh, basically, my company gives you the ability to use your phone system or your phone without a phone system present in the building. So, one of the major costs of what you have, from what I see right now, was the maintenance on that as far as a contract to keep the service up for just the, the phone system itself. Or if you were to, to replace it, you have the cost of the phone system, which was in excess of thirty thousand, I think, new.
I think, yeah, probably thirty thousand or so, is that right, Sam?
It's pretty close.
And then, uh, with that cost, though, that's only for five years because you're paying for what looked like a five thousand dollar software renewal as well as two thousand a year, I think, for the current provider to maintain that for you. Basically, if you put that in the cloud, outsource that, the server becomes, uh, a paid fee that you mu, you pay out monthly service for, and actually could ultimately save you money, uh, through the cost of eliminating that server, eliminating the software renewal, because that's now part of your service fee. And, uh, I didn't provide the quote because we didn't have a hard number on phones. We kind of estimated maybe thirty in these offices potentially.
I think sheriff needs thirty phones. I don't know how many phones anybody needs.
Once we were able to secure that, you can roughly calculate about thirty dollars a month per phone. And then, um, that's an ongoing service fee, kind of like your own phone bill. Uh, there's some taxes and, you know, uh, charges that you have to assess on that. But, um, you would essentially buy your own phone, a new phone, that would replace the phones that you have. And that's what the user sees, and that's all that really you need because that connects directly to the internet at that point.
So, we buy a phone, and we pay thirty dollars a month per phone, no other fees?
No other fees. Uh, I would probably request that you do maybe a two-year or three-year contract with me, um, in Cloud Communications. You have the right to move after that with your phone because it'd be like a cellphone.
We'd own it.
You own it.
How, what's the lifespan of the phone?
Five to ten years.
Five to ten.
And most people see ten years plus on those, on those kinds of phones. The phones that I specify would not require rewiring. Um, you actually, if you have a computer system already, you simply click through that phone system and plug right in.
Okay. What is that system called?
It's a cloud-based VoIP system. V-O-I-P, voice over IP. Currently, you have what's called a digital phone system. It still uses the traditional two-wire phone that you plug into the wall. This is a.
I have asked around, and I believe they said that they do have some copper in the building and some of the internet phones already.
Yeah, yeah. And, and if you've got some that you can just move over, you wouldn't have the cost associated with buying a new phone. The new phone cost is a hundred and fifty. One of the quotes I saw was a hundred and ninety-two for a competitive vendor.
So, a hundred and fifty a phone, thirty dollars a month for.
So, with thirty phones, it'd be about nine hundred dollars, which is less than what I think you're currently paying.
Yeah, I think on a current bill, um, it says about twenty-two hundred dollars a month.
The, the biggest, um.
I can't remember.
Susan, is that what the bills were that, that you gave me?
I don't know, I don't, I didn't look at them.
It, it's hard to split internet from phone with your current provider. I mean, there is a breakdown, but some of the stuff is a little ambiguous. So, you would, anything that's phone or fax, you would eliminate. And we had talked about moving fax specifically to a hosted fax, which you receive through email, which is then more secure, and you don't have the, the reliance upon that, you know, like lightning hitting your, your fax machine or fax machine being down, those kind of things. It receives redundant data center where that server is located.
So, Jennifer called and pulled some information for us today. Let's see what she said. We have fifty numbers tied to our account for the courthouse EMS, which would be four extensions. Can't get information for the sheriff's office because she's not on their account. And so, that's how many lines.
So, we talked about those numbers being what's called direct inward dial. Every extension that you have also has an outside line that people can dial directly to. There's an additional four dollar charge for each outside line. But you will eliminate some of those because the traditional phone system requires a couple extra open lines for what's called rollover, and, uh, you'll, you'll lose those except for the main number and then the fax number, which then, uh, any vendor, uh, we would keep all those numbers. That, that's, that's required for any vendor that you move to. Those numbers are portable, so.
So, our basic VoIP right now costs us twelve hundred at the courthouse.
So, the, the nine hundred dollar per phone, and then you said the direct inward dial, so four dollars in a month per, per line you want to keep. If, if you definitely need direct inward dialing for each person at each extension, or if you can eliminate some, it could save you. Uh, the, the only big criticism of having your phone through the internet is, okay, what if the internet goes down? So, you have to make some concessions for that. We put battery backups where your switches come back to so that if there is a power outage, the internet stays up. The other thing we talked about with your current, uh, internet provider, that's still just one point of failure. Even though you say you have phone service and internet, technically, the fiber still comes in, in one location. If someone hits that or gets dug up, it is severed. So, we talked about what Stronghold Data was recommending, which was, uh, diversifying your paths in. So, another fiber provider such as Cox Communication or whoever's in the area, or I do have a federal contract, and so I've worked at post offices and USDA offices. And what the federal government has stated is 5G failover in those situations is good enough. So, if you have a 5G transmitter, um, if the fiber gets cut, you can go to, uh, 5G internet, which would then allow your phones to go through. The other thing is every person that has an extension gets an app, so if they need to, th, their phone can ring to their cellphone.
Oh, wow.
In event of a failure, yep.
Okay. We have options. Nice to have options.
So, what brand phone would you put on, on the table?
It's totally up to you. You don't have to buy phones from me. We could do Cisco, Polycom are my two favorite. I think you got quoted for Grandstream. I don't prefer those. The, the, um, speaker quality is not as good. You know, Polycom has been around quite a while. Uh, I think HP just bought them, and then Cisco's been around forever. Uh, you're going to pay a little bit more for that, um, possibly two hundred a phone. But you're not buying a system. That's the key, is you're not buying a box that sits here that I consider, in the modern way of looking at things, a point of failure because that thing requires maintenance, and if it ever goes down or whatever, it, it is something that has to be paid in order to kept up, and it's now your responsibility, you know?
So, you're saying you, you're talking about putting in an UPS backup for the system?
Mm-hmm.
How big of a UPS?
Well, we'd have to look at what you've got right now. Thirty phones? I mean, if you've got two switches, it could draw up to fifteen hundred watts. Generally, a little two-U battery that sits at the bottom of your battery, of your computer rack would be sufficient for something like that. It could have up to three hours of, of battery backup time. In, in a, like a nine-one-one situation, of course, you'd want something larger than that. You certainly want the redundant, uh, connection coming in for fiber.
That's one of the things I'm, I'm concerned about is the redundancy because like three hours to me is not necessarily, I mean, it might work in, but.
Is there a backup generator to the building?
There is, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that backup generator, uh, takes care of, uh, nine-one-one.
Should be the priority.
It really should.
Well, no, it, it depends. A lot of, a lot of facilities only run generators for life support, meaning your HVAC system, y, your, your, your utility system within the building. So, again, I don't know.
Well, if we're taking on nine-one- Well, if we're taking on nine-one-one, we need to dive deep in that.
We need, we need to take a look at that, but the thing is until, until, until we figure it-
That's why I think they're talking about having a backup internet.
Right, so the thing is, like, there are UPS systems.
I think we use, do we not use that type of phone right now?
Yeah, well, the, the system that you got, it says SIP slash VoIP trunk.
Right.
The system itself has that.
Okay.
That's how it's connected right now.
What I'm saying is the, the, the next question is, if we put it in the UPS system, who maintains the UPS system?
That's up to you. I mean, if you want me to put that as part of the contract, we certainly can. If you want to look at Crocan, your current provider, to maintain the network equipment, everything in the rack, certainly up to them as well.
Whoever we would hire, I believe, for our technology support would more likely-
Could be in-house.
Do that.
The reason, the reason I'm bringing this up, Commissioner Mountburn, is the UPS system requires regular preventative maintenance, and they have a specific lifespan, and they are not cheap. They can be very cost prohibitive depending on the size of the UPS. The UPS model he's talking about, the one that sits underneath your computer, generally is a couple hundred bucks. The ones I'm talking, they could go up a couple thousand dollars.
What do we have right now?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
So we could maybe have that right now.
We could, yeah, we could. I mean, we need to do a, a deeper dive on it, but I do like the redundancy in there. I like the fact that he, he's saying we can go 5G.
Mm-hmm.
The, the issue I have is whatever we decide to go with, it needs to be, or we need to make sure it's compatible with everybody, or everybody's going to end up parsing out their own system, which ends up costing the taxpayers more money.
One of the things that I've seen happen when you do an overhaul of your network, when you replace those switches at the core and you put in the power over ethernet switches, and you centralize where those switches are, you put the battery where those switches are located rather than dispersing them to the individual locations. That way, even if they were to lose power on the 110, let's say you've got a thirty amp 110 that's tied in with your AC and everything else in your utility closet, all that would stay up as part of those utilities, yeah.
Okay, so... I believe... We have VoIP right now. Is that what you're-
Right.
Is that, that's what we have right now, so anything that you're talking about, if we don't have it, it would make it stronger, make the system better?
Well, we have Voice Over, yeah, we have Voice Over I P right now. My thing is I don't know if we have the redundancies that he's talking about.
Okay, so we need more than what we have right now?
I don't know. I can't, I don't want to speak out of turn because I don't know what we have exactly.
And so what you're offering is the same thing as what we have right now, the Voice Over I P?
Yeah, it just removes that server, a central server that you have running right now that is a potential, you know, failure point. And it's a cost point for maintenance and software renewal, that, that sort of thing.
Okay. You guys have questions?
I'm good.
I, um, I dread making this up. Sometimes when we're looking at things like this, and no disrespect to the gentleman, no disrespect to all the other vendors who came in here. You know, sometimes there's so much information coming at you from different things, and there's a lot of upsell, there's a lot of this, that. The minutia gets very mind-bending.
Sure.
We may need to go and talk to somebody who's not trying to sell the county something, a functional expert who can come in and say, this is what you really need, look out for this, look out for that. Make sense?
Sure.
Because I am not, you know, I mean, none of us here are telecommunications experts. You know, I know enough about it because it's part of my-
Yes.
But I'm not an expert, so.
And it's just recently been brought up, that's why we're just continuing the conversation. It looks like that's, they're wanting new phones, so we, so it sounds like we're shopping for new phones.
If you want to remove the actual physical phone from the equation as well, soft phone is an option, so if you have a computer-
They talked about that, and they didn't want that.
Yeah, and, and the fail, and the failover to your, your cellphone, obviously, which is, you know, what-
The issue here is, is are you looking at this for all the county or just the courthouse?
I mean, every... There's been discussion on wanting new phones, so I thought we better bring in some vendors that have phones.
Yeah, I know, I know that they're, the L E Os are talking about new phones, I got that, but is the courthouse talking about new phones too?
When, when we started discussing it, and Jennifer said the phones are terrible, so-
Okay.
Yeah, I think they're all talking about new phones.
All right, man.
One of the great things about not having a locked-in vendor system with your VoIP like you have right now is no matter where you plug this phone in, whether it's at the courthouse, at the police station, at nine-one-one, all those extensions are part of a unified dialing plan because they all connect through the internet. So is, when you pick up a phone and dial one-on-one, it's as if you're in the same room with them, so.
Thank you, Dallas.
Yeah. I can provide references and-
Okay.
The co-op that just was opened over here at the new building, the farm store.
Did their phones?
We did theirs, yes.
Wonderful.
And all of Gerard's co-op, actually.
Okay, okay. You guys have any more questions? I'm sure this phone discussion's going to continue.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and that's what I say, there's a lot of questions and decisions that need to be made internally and, and with what equipment you have now, and so it just, whatever you decided makes the best choice, then you let me know and I'll, I'll get you an official proposal.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for coming.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda item is, um... The first one, I'm going to cancel. That was mine on Personnel Matters. I'm not ready for that one. It was a job performance, so we'll just cancel it.
Okay.
And on the second one, pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen, B two for consultation with an attorney for a public body of agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. I move that we break into executive session for thirty minutes. Sound good, Bob? Or do you need that long?
Oh, twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty.
Okay, we'll go twenty minutes, returning to these chambers at seven oh... Seven oh seven, seven-ten? We'll do it at seven-ten. Myself, the other two commissioners, and counsel. Yes.
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 Don't drop this one. Oh. No, you're fine. Yeah.
Does anybody, does anybody know where this guy Cloud Communications is front-based out of? So we don't know if he's in Kansas. If he's in Kansas or Missouri, or Oklahoma, or Tennessee. Cloud Communications guy, where is he from?
I bet.
Mike, you can tell.
He's Dallas.
He's in the cloud.
I'm good, Leonard, Andrew.
I guess I could have done that.
Pretty nice this morning.
I'm uncertain.
Well, if you did producers, it can't be that far. But they can be that far away. I'm just kind of tired of potential hard tax dollars going to Missouri.
Yeah, I'm uncertain.
I put that in Cloud Communications.
He's at work out, at Councilor House.
Internet, but, uh, you know, he does the internet and he's not on the internet.
I Cloud must be just training. This I Cloud is registered.
And I don't, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. These ladies are operating, I mean, working on the laws, I mean, you cannot do this.
You can't get away with Voice Over Internet.
No, and then, then you should listen, when, when he said something about connecting, uh, connecting the server to their, their cellphones, and I said, that sounds secure. Yeah. That's fine.
Still available.
I don't have access to that building from the building.
Oh, he's talking about breaking a system. Yes. Yes, we'll have, we'll have that back. Well, it was legacy. It was legacy.
It was cut out before the FAA got there because the FAA required it. Yeah, you always use the- But there's a certification to help bring the product. There's a certification to keep that help. It has to be licensed, it has to be a windsock out there, it has to be paid. It needs payment.
It's going to get paid.
This K R I Commission, we heard Freeman.
Freeman's got, it's a range.
Yeah, yeah.
I did K R I.
K R I. Kansas Real Estate Investments. K R I.
We have it, we have it. We use it all the time. K R C.
It is a map, FAA has a map, it has a, it has an identifier. There's delegation included, there's bad weather. That's what I'm leading with. Hospital first let Allen was applauded to the Capitol. Because so much had to maintain the certification by the FAA. We paid ten dollars.
Oh, I wasn't sitting down, so that's why I don't have a shot. I don't, I wasn't, that was right before I came. We moved back, so.
I don't know how many times somebody's fucking with like Sam.
Lots of people.
Doesn't he remind you of Santa Claus, the whole movie?
Yeah, he's making a movie of Santa Claus.
He would.
I just say, you better be good. Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, God, this.
Do I have to start being good now?
Yeah.
You have to be good all over the world. Santa Claus watching all over your life.
You've seen the pictures, Greg, it was on.
Yes, with the blue hair.
With the blue hair?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were kidding Josh, you know, that he, he has to grow a red one.
Oh, yes, that's funny.
Shoot.
Red, white, and blue.
Hey, Susan?
Yeah.
Everybody can hear everything we're saying on, on YouTube.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to, I was going to ask anyway.
Ask me a question.
Can we, um, can the county afford new phones?
Yes.
Okay, how about?
And honestly, we need them because our server's going down, and Shane presented that several months ago.
But usually, usually about halfway through his presentation, I can't find my one goes now.
Servers are, it's outrun this useful life, so we're at that point.
I do remember, I do remember that, the server part. I don't remember the phone part, but I do remember.
It needs to be done.
Okay.
Is it, are we finally getting, I, I could never find it.
The what?
I could never find it.
Bourbon County Commission meeting.
I know, that's one I need.
I really, that's what I put in, and that's, yeah, that's what it says when you pull it, when it comes up there.
Bourbon County, if you just, yeah, give them the Bourbon County and you can.
Well, sometimes you do Bourbon County, you'll get Kentucky, so.
Yeah, you gotta be careful.
Which one?
You'll get a place in Kentucky.
Yeah, well, that's why I just said my bourbon.
Bourbon County's something over there.
Yeah.
You either get the one with Bourbon or the one without Bourbon. I always go to the one with Bourbon.
With Bourbon.
I have a cup in the car, yeah.
To have a work session every holiday.
It's, she did, I don't believe she turned that off tonight because the discussion continued, and then in the middle of more discussion out here, we're doing.
Yeah, seven-twenty-eight.
Oh, no, I don't.
I hope you got that last part where the last part of the sheriff's going back over that YouTube.
Oh, I'm sure that's not, yeah, because I don't think, I don't think mine was handed, flipped it off like she was. She wanted to create a break to separate, which makes you get something else. But it's okay.
They're passionate about it. Like they didn't care about their job, they didn't care. So that's the end.
How do you get that up there?
Well.
Sign off.
Or should you go to the- Yeah, yeah.
I could waste your time.
Uh-huh, see, I'll go here. Go, click on the YouTube one. Have to unmute, now that's, then, if you wanted to get tonight, it's right here. See where it says live?
Okay.
So, there we, there we go, you click, I hit on live, and then... Oh, yeah, that's you and me.
Yeah.
We got a picture picture, but there's our, that's it. And it's always behind, so if you're listening to that, even if that TV one out there, it was just not, I guess, hear it? It's delayed, it's delayed. Word is too behind. Yeah, so if you're in here trying to listen to it, that messes everybody up, so.
So if Stronghold is listening, you said that the little dot down there said the system needed to be updated, well, it's still there.
I didn't know you hit that little red button up there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I didn't know.
Yeah.
I knew there was a button somewhere that I wanted to hit.
Yeah, you click on enough things, you just will get there, I just, yeah.
It's delayed, just like this.
Just a little delay, not much.
Yeah.
But you will hear this if your earphones in, so we'll begin here.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be weird, dog, sitting in here listening to that, listening to you. It'll be, yeah.
Oh, you have to go up there.
Does anybody know what you did at the city?
No, what were they supposed to do at the city?
Form some citizens' IT committee here.
Oh, no, they didn't do it. Well, there was a designer, you have three things on that one.
I don't know if Amber got it queued yet, it might be on the desk.
I thought it was the same.
Okay.
Because she not getting them.
Now, because it's a group policy, where you want it before, okay, it's a group policy, so it's if the first one is gonna send you, there's gonna be a link, click on it so it doesn't go to your spam.
You hear that?
Yes, we do.
So it doesn't go to your spam. Or your general.
And get to.
Click on it.
With USD.
Once you get it, click on it. I'll I'll do a test one tomorrow.
Vanilla clay Bourbon County.
I'll try to set up all first thing, that's surely what I do first thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure.
Perfect, I'll get it.
I went down when they called down.
Was there anybody to go over there?
No, we were here. No, we were here.
Susan, when are they gonna?
Good, thank you, dear.
How many ambulance seats?
The what?
How many ambulance seats? Each of cushion, how many do you need?
Three two vehicles.
Well, yeah, one. We have two, we're having, we have seven.
I'll see what I can. So these really are.
I don't think.
International flight.
So much.
Susan, I also. I'm taking my. I lost it in the wrong place.
Not the time.
This room.
There was a.
I didn't get there till.
I didn't get trained on one.
We should have we should have ran out in our. Okay.
Oh, we need a room about twice the size. One piece.
They both stop right.
Right, right here. Is there a room about twice the size of available?
Prazers. I what? Prazers was gonna go.
That's not a courtroom.
And Prazers is gonna go to the the street ten, which is where the old IT is. The old what IT? And then IT was gonna go to the clerk's office and clerk's was gonna come over here to give us. Our biggest problem is we store all the records and when it comes election time, I have to test all the machines and when I pull them out, I take up all the space in the hallway here. It's it's not ideal, not ideal.
So it's just.
Or wear a weird hat that.
So one in front of them, because they're gonna take extra space, they wanna bring the driver's license over and stick it in the street ten, so that takes that away. And then they wanna put they wanna sell the board on the justice street because it's uh judicial in the trailer. Okay, for what? The judicial group. Is there street? And they have to have bathrooms, things like that, so they do, you know. It was from the start. Uh they're gonna want to sell the building. They wanna sell the building.
How many cost me?
Well, the roof needs replaced. The roof needs replaced. Yeah, there's a whole basement that's not good. Yeah, it's really. Yes.
I'll just wait till tomorrow night, Don, I'll have to get them all over Matthew Wells. And the guy owned all my information. He said to her, the city shouldn't be given away.
Yeah.
We currently.
All right, yeah, I remember that too.
That was on crutches.
What's the deal with the jaw? The. I don't understand. The one they. It was supposed to have been given to us. But it's no, almost a year ago. And legacy. Did legacy go? They almost go and down here, let's get down.
Meeting back to order, uh I move that we return to session uh with action. And I move that we approve the directions that we have asked the attorney to do on those civil matters then. That's best I can describe it, so.
Second. Yes.
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 And we will break for a five minute recess.
Commissioner Melvin, what's the question?
Yeah, I can answer.
Do you know where card indications is based on? Uh Frontenac maybe?
We googled them.
Yes, iCloud belongs to.
iCloud that?
Yes.
Sounds like spin. Yeah. I think they were previously Tyndall maybe? Tyndall? What's that?
I tell you what, she's got uh she's got a certain lifestyle, I'm just like. Yeah, yeah. You guys need me for anything else here?
I'm not sure.
One oh eight was second organization, the Izone, that one that planning commission.
Yeah, that one probably for sure.
So anyway, we can move that up, so I've only been up since three thirty.
That's it?
But I need a.
Yeah, well, no. If you'd have got it earlier, you probably could.
Three thirty? All of these to be signed, right, Mrs. Walker?
Did you guys all get my email that I'll be gone the fourteenth through the twenty fourth?
Yes, sir.
Going to Ireland to watch Kate stage play.
Have fun.
Quite an excuse to go to Ireland. They're playing Iowa State on the twenty third in Ireland. Supposedly Ireland's paying me two and a half million dollars or something to go to that club.
Okay, let's return to session and now we are open for public comments of items not on the agenda. Uh first up, Terry. You know, take you off, pass. All right, Dean Bailey, safety at Public Works. Good evening.
Hi, sir. My name's Dean Bailey.
Is that later?
And I'm a truck driver at Public Works and let you know upfront, the younger Mr. Bailey had no idea that I was getting up here tonight nor that I have any idea what he was gonna say tonight. But anyway, it concerns me the way that Public Works' safety has been portrayed here in the commission meetings, the work sessions, in the paper. To me, you're kind of portraying us as a unmanaged, running wild bunch of employees. And that that doesn't sit well with me and here's why. In previous employment, I've had thirty years in the safety field as safety team member, as a safety team chairman, and as a full-time safety consultant for ten times the employees that's here in Public Works. So with that knowledge, I look at Public Works and I don't see what you're seeing. And it concerns really, you know, concerns me that we're being portrayed like that.
I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, I understand.
Verbalized any issues.
I understand, but I've watched the meetings and heard the comments and all that. So that's just my opinion, but with the background of that I have, um it concerns me that we're being portrayed like that. That's just my comment.
What was your first name?
Pardon?
What was your first name?
Dean.
Dean, Dean.
Yep.
Nice to meet you, Dean.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next is uh Susan Walker, handbook.
Um on the handbook, um the concerns that I have are, um I do not feel like the information that our policies were even maybe considered when it was created. And so that's what I would ask is to go back and look through some of our, because we have some very specific um out of the ordinary policies. And so um I I would ask that, um in the past, and I know you were all new, um but the elected officials have all been very involved in this process because it affects our employees. And so I would ask for that respect also. Um how this came to me was one evening Mica had sent me a text and said, you have a copy? And I said, no, but I would ask that um that could the elected officials be involved? And she said, well, go ahead and pass that on to the directors as well, so that's what I did. What you will all find out is elected officials are very protective of their employees. And so that information is gonna get disseminated. So in the future, as Bill stated, probably ought to have a pretty good rough draft before it gets disseminated out. Um that would just be my recommendations. Um and there are a lot of things that um we handle in our office, we Selena would be a wealth of knowledge because she has to know that handbook in and out because of the payroll and how we handle benefits. And um so she could be a very good contact, so I would ask that that be considered.
Thank you. I think we had a very valuable lesson learned today, so. That's it on public comments?
I think I had one on contractual services as well.
Let's see, I had thought, oh, okay, public comment, didn't have a name on it.
Sorry. I.
Okay, so contractual services.
Um during the handbook discussion, you were talking about adding policies for financial policies. You need to understand that on contractual services, there are some statutes that govern um Public Works and buildings, so you need to be sure you. So you need to be sure you understand what that statute is, and if we're gonna address all, some, we need to address all. And so we probably ought to understand that there are some things you are required by law to bid out. You probably ought to also address how you dispose of county equipment, because there's also a law that governs that. So those would be my suggestions.
Okay. All right, next item, old business. Okay, 108 West Second Street Building, what I had, I will, I am withdrawing.
Do you have a date?
Nope, just totally...
Uh, the, I think, I think I started the discussion on the building for the 108 West Second.
No, that's on, uh, that was on, uh, you're on there, that building.
And I took it off, because she told me it was a different bit.
Oh, you took her off?
It looked like a different bit.
Well, it was different things, but, okay, we'll just go ahead with hers then, on that.
The building at Second Street, so I did go in there and look at their space, and their space is much greater than 500 square feet, I believe, is what they have. So I am still going to reach out to driver's license, let, talk to them a little bit about a different space, because they're very interested in a different space. They don't like the shared bathroom situation that they're in, and they'd really like to have a different space anyhow. So, I, I would like to consider pursuing the avenue that I'm, that I'm getting along with.
I would like to, I've always said I would like to see them out of that building and over here, just for safety purposes.
They'd really like it, they would really like that.
That would only leave one other tenant, and I think we, I'd already discussed maybe a possibility for a location for them to go, so I, I'm, I'm all for, you know, that, moving, moving forward, so...
All right.
Next up, or did you have any comments regarding that?
No, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, Organization Liaison, Commissioner Tran.
No, trying to wrap this up, here's a letter, I signed it, you guys all have, you both have copies of it. So, I'm just wanting to give this to, to wrap up this issue, just want to give it to the clerk, so she could send it out to the department heads.
Okay.
I asked if all three of us needed to sign it, she didn't think so, so...
We can do it.
That's fine with you? So I'll just, I'll just, oh, you wanna sign it?
Whatever.
Okay. Sign it on top.
I'll, I'll make a motion, it's the same letter that we've been circulating, right? So I move, we sign the proposal for the liaison position by Commissioner Tran.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Okay. Planning Commission Resolution. We were waiting on something for that, but I don't know.
I think I talked to one or two of you since the last meeting, and we had a discussion that might be wise to know the people that are going to be appointed. I know some counties have included that in the creation of a planning commission. It's not mandatory, but, you know, there are guidelines about the terms and how they're stacked, so you don't lose a lot, so... I can't remember which ones of you I talked to about that, which time, but I think that was one discussion that we had, was whether or not you wanted to, before you implemented it, if you wanted to know who you're gonna implement it. And the planning director. I think you also needed to determine if you want five or seven, and I think you can have it to nine. I brought the statute.
You can have up to nine.
Yeah, I mean, probably five would be better than nine, just in a smaller county, but that's really a commissioner decision, not a Bob decision.
I think the question was, do we need the planning director, considering that, I don't think anybody has the appetite to zone, where, as, I don't think anybody has the intention of codifying the county. And to me, it's like, if you're gonna codify a county, you're gonna need a planning director. In this case, I don't, one, I don't see the need for it personally, two, I don't think we have the funding for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably overkill, but that, you know, that's why we put in there.
But what I'm saying is, is it, is it required by statute?
No, I don't think it's required by statute.
Yeah, can we have that removed off of there for now? I mean, we can always add it as a position later.
I think I sent it to you guys in word, that I can change it tomorrow if you guys don't want it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we, we had a consensus that we didn't, didn't want to move down that road just yet.
I mean, if you look at the statutes, really what you're doing is establishing the planning commission, then to have hearings and meetings to give recommendations. So, after that, if you adopt zoning, then it will turn into more of a zoning board slash planning commission. I know in Stevens County, where I was county counselor, and Allen County, where I'm county counselor, they have a part-time zoning person after zoning is adopted. And that's mainly just to schedule hearings on conditional use permits and things like that. So, it's more of a part-time gig.
Okay.
That sounds more likely if you ever need it.
But I don't, you, you probably don't need one right now, because it's, it's really a public hearing, recommendations, then, you know, nothing's adopted till the commission goes through your process of adopting it. It's, it's up to you all, they're just a recommendation board. But it is statutory, so...
Okay.
So I guess to answer your question, you don't need a director, I don't think.
Right.
It, it was, it, it's contemplated, probably for bigger counties.
Okay, and in our selection process, I don't know that we all had come, we come to a consensus on how, is that just, can we do by letters of interest, or?
Yeah. It's probably the best way to do it, unless you all have people, I mean, there's some...
Well, then they can tell their people.
There's some guidelines on who can be appointed. They have to, the majority of the members of the county commission shall reside outside the corporate limits of any incorporated city in the county. You know, it's KSA 12-744 is the, kind of the bible of how to follow, or the guidelines to follow. I, I think it would probably be cleaner, or more clean, if you had the members, so you could name them in the adopt, the setting the planning commission up. You don't have to, but it's just another step. You can adopt, you can form a planning commission with no members, but nothing's gonna happen until you have the members anyway.
Okay.
I don't know what you all think, I think you've all read the statute. I know that another county that I talked to, they, they had the members named in the resolution, setting the planning commission up, so...
Okay, so we don't, we can go ahead and pass it and, and then...
Sure.
Ask for letters of interest of who wants to be on the board or commission. So, all right, will I move that we, unless you got further discussion?
Are we gonna clean it up a little bit, or you gonna clean that resolution up again?
It'll be cleaned up with the changes that we asked him to make.
You're gonna take the director position out?
You got anything else you want removed from it?
Well, what you could, what you could do is, you could adopt the formation of the planning commission, and then I'll send out a copy to each one of you, and if you have changes, I could provide a final version for your next Monday meeting.
Okay, that'll be fine, okay.
That way you have a chance to read it, and you're not hurrying through it.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
It pretty much just follows that statute.
Yeah, all right.
So you're gonna move to adopt the formation of a planning committee by resolution, which will be presented at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
No, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, I move that we adopt a resolution for a planning commission. And adopt the verbiage of it next week, so...
Yeah, and it'll be available for the public next week.
Okay.
One second.
I'll try to get that to you tomorrow or Wednesday.
Yes.
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 Okay, next up, Benefits Committee Letters of Interest.
Do you mind if I, I don't think there's anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See y'all later.
Yeah.
Bye.
Good day. Bye.
I think they were all employee children, I don't think, I don't think we got a, a single one that was anything different.
So you're saying all, all the people who put in letters of interest had employee, were employees with children?
Looked like it. Employee plus children, Bob Reed. Employee plus children, Mike Houston. Employee children, Tom Robertson. Employee children, Ashley Hall. Yep, that's, I don't, there are only four of them?
I have not written a letter that I would, I have...
Okay, so Terry, you're employee only? Okay, so Terry, employee only? And Jennifer said that she was submitting one too, did you get one from Jennifer?
She's employee plus children.
Okay. So for employee children, you have Jennifer, Bobby, Mike, Tom, and Ashley. So we have Terry in EMS, Ashley works in, does she work in the?
Treasures. Treasures.
Okay. Tom is Public Works.
Bobby's Public Works.
Bobby's Public Works. What about Mike?
EMS.
Okay. And then...
I'm on there by the committee, and I'm family, so...
So you have family, okay.
Chair, Ms. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Bob says he's employee only.
Oh, Bob is employee only?
Yeah.
Okay, so Bob, employee only?
I don't think Selena takes the insurance, so she would be an outside, and I think she was one of the other ones that was on this.
She does not have insurance? Okay. And, so you have EMS?
And are we wanting to keep this just as insurance, or do we wanna kinda expand it to other benefits?
I think right now, I think right now, you should keep it insurance only, because I wanna know...
Did anybody from the sheriff's office submit? I thought Bill said that he had a couple that wanted to.
Yeah, that's who I'm texting right now, an individual advised us, you know, think you would have enough time to commit to it, but if it's still open, I'll try to reach out to somebody else.
Would Annie be interested?
I have somebody who would not have enough time to fit into it, so...
She would be good.
But I'm gonna try to find somebody.
Okay.
Anyways, to answer your question, Chair, Ms. Chairman. My thing is, like, the previous commissioners moved us from one plan to this plan, and my understanding is, and I could be, my understanding is, this plan has cost us more than we initially anticipated. And I know that we're gonna bring these people together to figure out what's, what's the best solution moving forward, but one, we don't have the numbers, we need really take a look at the numbers, because we need to find out exactly how much we're spending per employee on the current plan. How much did we spend on the, the, each employee on the previous plan? What's the projection for this plan moving forward into the, the, the third and final year of coverage? So we're currently in the second year of coverage.
We're on the first.
We're on the first? So we got another two years, so, all right, so in two years' time, we, if we can formulate it here, at least we, we, we can make a strategic move two years into the future. Like, maybe we could do something to save money for the county, because everything is going up. I mean, insurance costs is going up, commodities is going up, everything's going up. So we need to be judicious in how we, we do this. So I don't want just, this committee to just focus on this company that we have now, I want them to focus on...
And I, and I agree, I think, I think insurance is a, is a really touchy subject right now, because of this change, and because of, of rumors that have went around about increasing, or making the, the employees pay more after the first of the year. I think Mr. Campbell brought that up in his public comments, and I've, I've, I've received several phone calls from, from former employees advocating for current employees, that, that this is, you know, this is gonna hurt things. And I, and I'm, I'm gonna be right up front, I'm, I'm not for raising, or taking and putting more of a burden on our employees in this insurance realm, and, you know, especially if we can't, I mean, we, if you bring their wages up and compensate them in that area, then that, you, you do give them a better chance of, of making a pick, you know, but it's still the same amount of money. You know, if you raise their wage, wages and then raise their insurance, they, they're, they're not, they're not gaining no ground being competitive or comparable to other, other places. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we, we face the same potential of losing employees if we don't, if we're not competitive in our benefits package as well. And that's been one of the things, I had a debate the other day with a gentleman over 25% benefits versus 40% in benefits, and, of course, he, he thought it was forty, forty thousand that they were making in benefits. And I'm like, no, that's, that's kinda hard to see, that most of them aren't even making forty thousand a year, let alone forty thousand in benefits too. And then when you look at the list of benefits they get, where's the 40%? I would like to see a breakdown of where that's coming out, that it's, if the average is 25%, which I looked up labor, the Labor Bureau of Statistics, it's 30%. So, 25, you know, we're all within the same ballpark, but jumping from 25% or even 30% to 40%, and we're taking out the same amount of benefits. It's, what's extra, what are we paying that's extra that makes it 40%? That's what I would hope, that the committee that, that we selected for helping us with our budget is gonna be able to come back and explain, because that's what I want to explain, because, again, they're gonna have to really convince me that it's beneficial to our employees to make them pay more after the first of the year, and that's just my opinion, so...
Do you guys wanna select?
I guess we can move forward on this committee with just insurance.
Somebody with the employee plus children, there's several in there with employee plus children. So we have, Terry said she is employee only, she just didn't get a letter in.
No, I didn't get a letter in.
And then Susan, you said your family.
I think this, the entire group's a good group.
Bob is employee... Bob is employee.
What's that?
I think that entire group's a good group.
I, I would, I wouldn't have a problem with the, just more than the whole group.
Do you want to select somebody with employee plus children?
I don't know any of those individuals personally.
Well, just did you guys read their letters?
Can you read the names again, Micah?
Yeah, sure. We have Bob Reed. I misread his. He said he had employee plus children, but he does not have that anymore. He's currently single. And I think that's the same as yours.
Right.
So, we have Bob Reed that's single, you have single, Mike Houston that has employee plus children, Tom Robinson that has employee plus children, Ashley Hall that has employee plus children. And in this letter, she said she has experience with healthcare. And so if you guys don't have any.
How many, how many did you slate to be on the board?
So we should have one with no insurance. Susan said Selena's going to be on there per the bylaws, and she has no insurance. One with employee only. Terry said that she has employee only. We have, we need one with employee plus children. We don't have somebody on here from treasure.
Ashley is.
Ashley's from treasure.
Right, I hadn't written that down yet. So.
You don't have employee plus spouse.
Employee plus spouse.
And how many total is on, is?
Five, it should be five.
I mean, how many total that you got, letters from or interest now from here?
Is in your agenda packet. There's one, two, three, four, but a lot of them were.
And then Terry is five, and there was, it wasn't somebody else?
Bob.
Bob.
Bob, yeah.
That's one of the letters.
And Susan, Susan wanted to be on.
I'm with Susan. I think those, those people, I think that would be a great group.
I think just do the whole group.
We have about twenty-one people that take employee plus spouse.
And nobody would be on that? Who?
Deputy Moore said he would represent our department if you guys would allow him to be on.
Moore, what does he have?
Tyler Moore.
Okay.
He's employee plus children.
Employee plus children.
That must be most popular.
Actually, single's the most popular.
Okay. So you want to add all the letters?
Yes.
Plus the ones that stepped up to represent the, where we didn't get.
That'd be seven people?
Who are?
Seventy of your hundred and two employees take employee only.
Okay. So, so we can do Terry, Bob. There's two employee onlys. Susan has family. Selena has none. Deputy Moore has employee plus children. Ashley has employee plus children. So we have somebody from the treasure, somebody from sheriff, EMS, Public Works, clerk, clerk.
So that's seven people, eight? I moved that we adopt all.
Can you see, can you hand me that list, please?
And not everybody's on it that sent a letter. There's still more letters here.
Thank you.
Mike is not on that list. Tom is not on that list, so if you want to add more. Don't know if somebody from our budget committee will be willing to be on there. It's, it seems like we're amending the bylaws here if we're going to add extra, so we should ask if somebody from our benefits committee, or from our budget committee would attend.
I need to ask the departmentary on something.
Okay.
Thank you. So you want to move it from five to whatever it is you have now?
Well, I hate for it to get too lopsided with a whole bunch of one coverage. But if the majority are just employee only, then I think it would be reasonable to allow an extra employee only on there.
An employee only in there?
Add an extra employee only. Susan said seventy percent are employee only.
Seventy employees are. Fifty-two are employee children. Those are your two highest in both groups.
So we have a hundred and twenty employees?
Hundred and ten, is what I was talking about earlier.
How about we have fifty-two and seventy, and then have any others?
It could just be when I pull the numbers that there, there are some terms in there. Because all, all I, I have to rely on Employee Navigator, and if terms hadn't been updated timely, then they could be so set nothing.
So we don't know if we have good numbers? What do you guys think?
I think until you get all your facts straight. Because part of this thing is just, you're going to make a decision. You don't have all your facts and your numbers right.
We need good numbers. Or we could just stick to the, the bylaws and just have one from each.
Do we have one from each?
Employee only, employee plus children.
And a single employee plus spouse.
Yep.
Do you have employees that are married, okay?
Do we have any employee plus spouse?
Yes, we have.
You asked at the last meeting that we spoke about this, if we would consider moving forward with the committee if we didn't feel it the way the bylaws were written. I'm open to consideration.
Okay, and my, I'll just, I mean, I'm, I'll move that we adopt everybody that's been listed, that's volunteered for it. That's, they're employees. They get insurance of one form or another, or no insurance, so I think it pretty much well represents everything. And I think it, you got a pretty good number of, of employees willing to step forward to do this. That's my motion, so.
So we'll amend the bylaws to add these individuals. And I would like to go ahead and amend them to add somebody from the budget committee if they're willing.
I can amend that to my motion, yeah. Sheriff's thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Is it going to die?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next item is five-year solid waste plan. Commissioner Tran, you have the floor.
The, the plan, I finally got all the signature blocks that we needed. It's going to be myself, the three commissioners, Mr. Joseph Smith, and Dustin Hall for Public Works. And with the understanding that Mr. Hall will be doing this until, one, we create a new plan, which is due in twenty-eight, I believe, yes, April twenty-eight, and/or when the new Public Works Director comes on, we can change it out at that point. It's just, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So.
Sam, I was writing.
Do we have something we need to sign, or is it just?
So we, all we got to do is sign this, and then Mrs. Lopp can return it into the state.
So you, you got another member?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Will you tell me what that was?
I have myself, you, Commissioner Bear Bauer. Yes, ma'am, the three commissioners. Mr. Dustin Hall from Public Works and Mr. Joseph Smith.
I thought you had others that wanted to do that.
The original document had all.
Three commissioners.
Three commissioners and.
Two other individuals.
Okay.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll take it back to Mr. Smith to sign when you're done, Commissioner Milburn.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I motioned that the effort mentioned five individuals, signed the document, so we can go ahead and submit it to the state.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 We're just going to have to get Mr. Hall to come in and sign it.
You're going out there Wednesday, aren't you?
Yeah, I guess, yes, yes, yes.
All right. Next up is stronghold when you're ready, Commissioner Milburn.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Let me try to get Jason on the line.
Okay.
Please, please, you're.
So stronghold has come back to us and said that they would love to clean up the system and do a project. They have sent a document that entails the project. I don't have it printed off. I can print it off, get it to the clerk, get it out for the next meeting, and they can talk about it a little bit. And we can talk about if we need the project before moving forward with bids, or if you want to move forward with bids, or what we want to do to move forward with our technology. We do have some Windows eleven computers that are going to need updated. The treasurer's office, they're still experiencing those problems that they had before we even went over to the stronghold. You know, they'd like to go ahead and resolve that. They'd like to resolve whatever the switches are.
So that one of their projects is to do that?
Yeah, it would, it would all be encompassed in the project.
Okay.
We're trying to articulate what they articulated to me. And then you, they would want to do, change whatever switches that are keep going out at the landfill if that needs to happen. It sounds like we got it resolved, so it sounds like we're good there. You know, you guys are welcome to call in here articulated better. I can give you the document, but I'd love you to hear it from them before the next meeting, so we can decide what to do to move forward.
Did it give you a dollar, ma'am?
Seventeen thousand.
For these projects?
For all the projects.
And can, I mean, and they got that in writing on what the projects are and stuff? Can they just email that to us?
Yes, I think they can.
All right, and then we can look at that and, and decide by next week?
So of course, did it have a performance work statement with it, that document? Did you read it?
Performance work statement?
Yeah, it's PWS, so basically it's going to tell you what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and it spells it all out.
Okay, I will ask about that.
And I know Jason knows that I've been asking for that, because he's, he's, he's very keen on providing us a PWS, so.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, I'll ask those things.
Okay, so new business, sanitation resolution. The, you should have a copy of the existing sanitation code that we have, dated May of nineteen ninety-eight. I think sanitation has changed a little bit since then.
Was it placed on the table?
I think.
It's in the back here.
Yeah. Here we go. Well, and, and, and we got time. I mean, here's the old one, the red, and the new one. The, the new one that KDHE has out for minimum standards is in the blue one. What I'm, what I'm looking at right now is that we come up with a date and do a, a work session and bring in our current sanitation inspector and his supervisor and any, you know, and formulate some type of new code moving forward. There are some things in the, in the old code that need to be replaced, updated, upgraded, and then there's, and even eliminated, so. You know, eliminate waste, just a joke.
So what do you want to change it to?
Well, KDHE, KDHE has upgraded, or they have a newer standard out that's, was in twenty twenty-three when they, when they did that. And so what we have there is the nineteen ninety-eight plan that, that they put out, and we adopted it per, you know, as it was. I don't think they added or took anything away from it. It was as is. So that's the minimum standards for sanitation when it comes to septic tanks and wastewater and water supply and food, so.
Are there a lot of people out there that are going to have to change their current sanitation if?
I think grandfather clause protects, yeah.
Yeah, until they sell their house.
Yeah, or make modifications to their existing system. This would just be moving forward. I think, and that's why I said, I, I, you know, recent developments and some issues that I've been dealing with has brought this to the forefront, that we got a, you know, it's a nineteen ninety-eight version. I think it's probably past time to be reviewed and, and look at upgrading the standard. That's why I want to, I'm just asking for, you know, let's set a works, a work session for it, and then we can go over it.
This is already, looking at this, okay, this is the old standard that a lot, I know that, that a lot of houses have, so they got a thousand gallon septic tank, minimum ten, uh, minimum ten feet from, from the structure. It's sitting on top of three inches of gravel. It's sitting on top of three inches of gravel, um, tank shall be a minimum hundred feet from any water supply, ten feet away from, or ten feet away from water supply lines. And then the lateral's four hundred feet. That's the old, and, you know, that's how a lot of these homes are built. But I'm reading this in ninety-eight, they also set it up so you can have a leach field.
Mm-hmm, but look at, uh, and then look in the blue and you could see the new and what standards are.
Yeah, basically what they're doing here with the new is they're saying, they're trying to figure out how many people are in the house, what you're using it for, um, this, the amount of water that's coming out. Okay. I know somebody who's very smart with this stuff. May I have this copy?
Um, yeah.
Thank you. I'll get it back to you if you have the.
Okay, well, it's the one I've been marking up for the, uh, other issue that we're dealing with.
All right, and this is the new one.
That red one is the old one and the, and the blue is the new standard.
You went from twenty-four pages to sixty.
Oh, man.
Whoa. Whoa, okay.
That's progress. I think forty-some of those pages is just tissue.
To be used as tissue, yes.
I'm on a roll.
Yes, you are. Some really crappy joke you got there. Sorry, sir.
All right, hey. The comedy hour has begun. All right, so.
You did say this job would stink from the.
Sometimes it moves slow, sometimes it moves fast. All right, so next, uh, we've done department update, so commissioner comments, um. Yeah, I guess we're moving forward on this. Do you wanna do a work session?
On this?
Yeah.
Can we do nine-eight? It's empty.
Nine-eight is when?
Oh, it's just empty on our.
That's September. How about eight-eighteen?
Something on every other day.
How about eight-eighteen? There's only one thing on there.
So you wanna do a work session before the meeting, another four-thirty thing?
Four-thirty.
That's what I'm, I'm looking. I'm looking.
Yeah, I think you're out of pocket, aren't you?
You better just move that on down the road then.
Yes, I'm out of pocket that, that one.
Okay.
Yes.
So I guess it's going, you're, you're back on, uh.
I'm back on the twentieth.
Well, just.
Unless you wanna do like the twenty-first, twenty-second?
Yeah, let's just put it on the future for now then.
Okay.
We got four things on there already, so. There's no rush until you come back out of.
And we have the phone company, we need to put on the future too, because everybody says that we need phones, so.
Okay, um, commissioner comments.
You're first this time, aren't you?
I can be first. I got a couple of things. One, um, is in regards to, um, I just had it. Now I lost it, um. Oh, the governor, uh, GovDeals, uh, our auction for, um, hospital equipment will go online Wednesday. Uh, one thing that we're waiting on, uh, is they got several items on there, but they're waiting on another one. But I had a question that they couldn't produce. Do you know what bank account is assigned to that account? Uh, Madam Clerk, can we, yeah, and, uh, they were supposed to check, and I just wanna double check and make sure that we're, the money's going in the right, right area, so, um.
That will be the treasurer's account when we do it.
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure that it's matching up with what they got, so. Uh, the other thing I got is just, um, you know, we are going through a, a season of change here and, uh, you know, some of these changes that we're gonna do, some may like them, some may not. Uh, I understand though that, uh, I want people to understand is that what we're, you know, anything that we're looking at, we're looking at for the betterment of Bourbon County. Uh, and, you know, betterment for our employees, betterment for our taxpayers. And, I mean, that kind of is where the struggle lies, because, you know, you're either gonna increase the mill or you're gonna lower the mill. And one side or the other is gonna suffer from it. Um, and as I said earlier, uh, I'm not willing to, um, mess with what they're already got and try to make them pay more or pay less, or, and they can pay less, but I mean, uh, pay more on, on benefits that they've already got, so, I mean, with that said, I'm just, I mean, I'll reiterate. I know we're gonna have the budget committee coming in and we're gonna be looking at their recommendations and they've already, uh, presented some for their next meeting, uh, in their agenda, so let's, you know, uh, hopefully we can get it to where it's below revenue neutral and lower the taxpayers' burden. But, uh, right now we got, we got a lot of, uh, crises that we need to solve first, so. Uh, just keep it in mind and, and be patient with the changes that are coming. That's all I got to say, so. Next. Can you hand it to Mrs.?
So, I'd like to talk a little bit to the employees today, um. I want to do right by the employees while at the same time not overburdening our taxpayers. That's hard to do. That's really hard to do. I understand that we have lowered the mill recently and taken money from all the departments, and that makes it hard to give raises. Um, benefits keep going up. That's a, it's a very excessive number, um. I do think that we are going in the direction of some changes to the benefits. I don't want anybody to be blindsided, but I think that we do have the final approval here, but the budget committee, I think we need to pay close attention to what they're talking about. And I really, really do not wanna do anything wrong by the employees. While keeping the taxpayers in mind.
Thanks. So I've been here a month and a half, and I've tried to make it so that every time I speak, that I'm very clear in my, my, my speech and, and what I mean. And last week, I guess I muddled through that and caused some pain to some of the county employees, um, that I respect very, very much, um, and that's unfortunate, and I have spoken to them personally. Um, and I'm glad, you know, he came here and he said what he had to say tonight. Um, I am truly sorry about that. That was not my intention. I too have nothing but the best wishes for the people within the county. I am gonna make mistakes. You're, if, if you put your heart and soul into this job, you are going to make mistakes and you are gonna make people upset. And I'll face that heat if and when it comes. I don't have an issue with that. But I'm not here to mess with anybody. I'm not here to mess with your livelihood or take money out of your pocket or food off your table. But when you have a hundred and ten, hundred, let's say one fifty, cause the number's not sure at this point, but let's just say you got a hundred and fifty employees. I wanna do right by a hundred and fifty employees. But what do I do with the other thirteen thousand or something people? Somewhere in this whole mess, we have to find a balance. And I'm open to suggestions. I'll listen to what you gotta say. But in the end, that heavy lifting has to be done by the three people on this table. And we'll probably get grilled for it, and it is what it is. But just know that I believe the three of us, our hearts in the right place. It's just we gotta figure it out. And that's gonna be the hard part, so. I thank you, everybody out there here, the ones who come to the meetings regularly, for all your support. And, uh, I will do better. Thank you.
All right, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So, when a gentleman comes up, like Mr. Reagan, and wants to make the comments.